And good morning. It is nineteen minutes after eight o'clock and joining us in studio this morning, candidate for city council representing Ward four, Daryl Johnson in studio this morning with us. Morning, sir. How you doing today?
Good, good, good. Nice to be on your show. I hear it all the time and uh
You're the one.
It's nice to be part of the component and yeah, exactly. So you're the one.
That's right. I'm the one. So um as I, as I say, and I'm saying this every single candidate because I truly mean this. Thank you for, for stepping up and doing this. This is, this is a, this is serving the community. I mean, i- i- it's a lightning rod. You know, I don't care if city council mayor, anytime you're running for elected office, there's, there's a lightning rod that kind of comes attached to that, you know, but um and, and so we do appreciate you coming in saying, you know what? I, I wanna do my part to make this community better and I appreciate that.
Exactly. You know, it's kinda like uh when I started watching my kids play little league sports, you know, and sitting there on the bleachers and listening to all the parents complain and saying, oh my gosh, we should be doing this. We should be doing that. And ultimately I just uh next year, I'm the coach and the manager. And you know, you just get tired of complaining and uh you tired of watching them get slapped around. And you know, there's so many skills that these young kids could be learning and you wanna be the one to actually teach them and watch them progress. And, and they're like little flowers and they blossom and just to see all that on the field and just explode into enthusiasm with the kids, the parents. Uh I ended up doing it for about eleven years. And I ended up uh complaining about how the league was ran and I was vice president for eight years. So uh
So you got a history here. I don't like it. I'm just gonna get sucked into it.
Same way with youth football. I did the same thing, sitting there on the sidelines and uh we were very successful. I never had a, I always had a winning season and uh you know, that's what you do. And here I am, uh every day opening up the Roswell Daily Record and God bless the Roswell Daily Record. They give us our valuable news, but uh I'm constantly opening it up and looking at things that I disagree with. And uh sometimes it's easy to disagree when you don't know the whole picture.
Sure.
Uh and that's uh, that's why I'm running. You know, I can no longer sit back and say, what the heck are we doing? What are we doing? And you know, here I am, no longer gonna be on the bleachers like I did with my kids. I wanna try to get in the ring and actually try to coach the city somewhat. And uh I have a lot of skills that I'm bringing to the table from uh what I've done with the state.
Yeah. And that's where I kinda wanna talk about. You're, you do have lots of uh government experience. Your, your day job, for folks who don't know, is with the New Mexico Department of Transportation. Um CFO, which would be the chief financial, the money guy.
The money guy. Actually, that's what they call me. There's the money guy, you know? And uh yeah, my signature is actually, it's on all big ticket items, you know? And uh I have coached the administrator who works directly for me into also signing on the dotted line and she knows my criteria and what we expect and we're, we do many quotes. We, I mean, I am the most frugal guy you ever seen.
Sure. But I imagine that also gives you experience with state money and how they, how they move it, how they operate with it. Even, I would even say you probably have, you know, some experience between the various administrations that you've served under. Uh where you can almost probably anticipate what's coming and where it's going and, and where it's coming from. Some, you know what I mean? If, if you're, as a CFO, you, you know, you got your ear to the ground. You're seeing where the money's being spent and how it's being spent, or you could read the tea leaves on what you're getting and what you're not getting and all that.
You're exactly right. I mean, the first thing you wanna do is always have a plan, you know? And at the, at the New Mexico DOT, we got about a, a multi-year plan, five-year plan. And we always, uh when another, when once a year lapses, you create another plan for the upcoming year. And uh at the beginning of every year, I create a business plan and I get all of our allocations, you know? Uh twenty-five million, somewhere around there in our operations, about twenty-five million in our road betterments. And uh probably about seventy-five million in new construction projects. And uh my affiliation with the new construction is limited. I ju- we just sign for all the payments and make sure they follow all the criteria and everything. Those are out to bid. Uh and they're highly, highly bid upon. And there's some very stringent things where the feds overlooking everything. I mean, we have oversight and so many different aspects of that. It's crazy. But on the operations and our road betterments, that's all me.
Gotcha.
And uh I'm constantly looking at our business process. Uh you know, they wanna haul material or do we wanna have the contractor haul?
Mm-hmm.
It's real simple. You throw down a piece of paper and a pencil and you start doing math and you figure what is our best plan of attack, you know? And, and, and all components of everything we do, uh that's, that's what I have to do. And to look at dollars, uh you have to look at them in a, cause I wanna say we got probably about seventy-five different line items. We got accounts for everything you can think of. And when one count, when one account gets a little weak, uh we have to strengthen it up by robbing from another account. I mean, your budget just doesn't grow during the year. You get a budget, you make a plan.
Sure.
And anytime you deviate from your plan, you have to rob from one, as they call rob from Peter.
To pay Paul.
To pay Paul, absolutely. And you know, it's very, uh it's kinda fun, you know? Because I'm constantly, every week, I'm looking at budget, I'm seeing what we have spent and I'm doing projections. Why do I do projections? In state government, uh we start out with a big budget. And on June thirtieth, the budget has to be, guess what? Zero.
Yeah, it's gotta balance.
It's gotta be zero. I mean, you get the whole budget because whatever you don't spend, what is the old saying? If you don't use it, you lose it.
Sure. I mean, obviously, uh like my military experience and the things like that. I better use up all that per diem where they're not gonna pay us that the next time, you know?
Right, right. And see, uh that logic is, is true to form. Uh and it was very, very unique when I first started there because uh, you know, we would go out on these spending sprees just to spend the money. And I'm like, no, we have the ability as, as the CFO to move this money wherever we want it.
That's the perfect excuse for fraud, waste and abuse, I'm imagining.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mike. And you just hit the nail right on the head. And what I would do is uh, you know, where does our tax dollars come from? It comes from gas tax. That's where, that's how we're paid, you know? And I think it's seventeen point eight per, eight cents a gallon. And whether the price of gas goes up, it still stays, stays the same amount. And whether it goes uh down, it still saves, it still stays the same. So uh it's, the concept is uh when the gas price is lower, people use more gas, we get more tax. When the price of gas goes up, people use less and we don't get as much tax. Uh you know, if everybody, if anybody ever looked past how we
Sure.
get our tax and how it's actually derived. But um one of our big, biggest objectives are at the end of the year is to put that gas tax back on the road. So what I do is all of my line items toward the end of the year and uh my administrator, uh she's pretty, she's pretty frugal and, and that's one of the reasons I hired her. She's, she's great. But that's one of the things that we do is we look at all our line items and we're very frugal all year long. We're tight wads and we don't buy things we don't need. And I always feel like Larry Barker's looking over my shoulder and at any given time, he's gonna say, hey, the camera crew's coming in and we wanna look at something and, and I'm ready for them at any given day and time. And actually, I'm proud of what we do there and we do a great job of it. But at the end of the year, I get all of our expenditures and say, I have like a couple of million dollars. And I'll always go to my, you know, we've got projects just sitting on the shelf. All we gotta do is fund them.
Gotcha.
And I mean, you know, once again, we have a five-year plan. And so I get my money at the end of the year and I spend it on one big project or two projects. And uh that's the way the taxpayers wanna see their money go.
I'm, I'm curious, do you ever get, because obviously the city, the county, they have their own road projects and fundings and things. Um is there a lot of dealings with, you know, maybe partnerships in some of that? Is there, because all right, we're the county or the city's like, all right, we're gonna work up to here and then the, then the state takes over. I mean, is there, do you have a, I'm guessing, cause you handle money side, not, not so much the asphalt side of it. But, but uh I mean, is there a lot of that where you have to interact with, with city, county people? Kind uh, you know, deciding where the money's coming from, who's, and who's responsible for what part of this road and that and all that?
Well, absolutely. You know, um the city draws their line in the sand where they end and we began and so does the county.
Yeah.
And uh we have to have a good relationship with all municipalities. It's, it's a must. You know, uh we have a program called our local government road fund and uh it's a, it's a state derived fund. And uh counties and cities all apply for these funds.
Gotcha.
So, oh yes, they're always uh, they're always in conversation with us. And we always have to look at what is the best for all of us. And it's, it's a good balancing act and uh
And I was just kinda curious, like, cause obviously, you know, we talk about city and people and I, and I hear one of the things that people uh are having issues with a lot and even candidates in other wards here, not just, you know, it's all wards. And they're talking about road conditions in the city and stuff. And so obviously, as in the DOT, that's not your ball, that's, that's not your world. But I didn't know if, if you see from that perspective, what some of the stuff we're talking about here.
Well, you know, Mike, it's funny you say that because that was one of my biggest talking points. You know, when we first had our, the forum, uh everybody started with a little bio of themselves. And, and I shot off with, we're taxed enough and our roads just look like they're horrible. And uh our, our infrastructure is, is crumbling, it's failing us. And you know, it's real simple. The taxpayers of Roswell, you know, they want, they pay their taxes for garbage, sewer, our waterline infrastructure, our water. And guess what? Our streets, you know? And uh anytime they hear conversations about money going elsewhere, they cringe. And I'm gonna tell you, I've knocked on a lot of doors lately and I've talked to a lot of people and especially over the, around the tree streets. Oh my gosh, those streets are horrible. And they're like, they throw their hands up and they say, we've given up on city government. They don't care about our streets. They're not gonna do anything. And uh we've never even heard of a plan where they're gonna even think of doing anything.
Gotcha.
And it uh, it's heartbreaking to hear that people have lost confidence in the city. And for me, you know, being on the outside looking in, you know, I don't know all the criteria the city faces. But I do know that we, more comprehensive thought needs to be put into the management of the funds.
Sure.
And I, you know, that's where I wanna bring my talents in because I like to uh make the rubber meet the road. And seriously, it
Make the dollar stretch, make everything.
And that's what I do, you know? Uh that's one of my biggest uh successes for the state was uh getting more bang for our buck.
So let me ask you, and obviously, you know, you, you haven't been a city councillor before here. So you don't see all the Xs and Os that, that they see.
Right.
But uh being the financial guy for the NMDOT, being uh the budget, I mean, um just from the outside looking in, is there things that you'd like right away, you wanna get in there and say, you know what? You guys don't do this right. We should start looking at this. Is there any in the budgetary side or anything that, or red flags that you see just from your experience um from the outside looking in that you wanna address?
Well, you know, uh from the outside looking in, you know, like I opened the paper today and I see where we wanna vote for eleven point one million dollars to uh fund uh the ascent of
Aviation.
The planning, the construction of everything. And uh, you know, I'm wondering why we're doing that, you know? And, and once again, what is our, our end game on this, you know? You're, they're taking a million from wastewater, a couple of million from solid waste, uh four point one from the general fund and I wanna say a million something from the water fund. And, and of course, uh what you've just done is you've had a plan and now you've kinda wrecked it somewhat. And you've robbed from, once again, Peter to pay Paul. And you know, I, I don't know if we're turning into a bank now, but uh it's kinda scary to see stuff like that. And I, I would like to know is what is in it for the city, you know? Uh and the, those are beautiful things. And look, I am nothing but excited about bringing jobs to Roswell. I mean, that is an exciting thing.
We all would love to see that happen, yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, that is one of the most great things I can hear. I mean, anytime we get our airport, our infrastructure out at the airport and we monopolize any kind of, anything we can out there, it's a great thing. Because I'm gonna say in the near future, that's where a lot of jobs are gonna be coming from, a lot of well-paying jobs.
Sure.
And we do need to pay attention to that. And maybe this is a good thing, but I also would like to say, well, how about our roads? You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep going back to what everybody's complaining about.
They are the arteries of our town.
They are the arteries of our town and they just suck the life out of some beautiful properties. I mean, when you turn on a road and you see, oh my gosh, you can't, you have to use both hands to hold your drink or you're gonna spill it because of the bumps. It's just ridiculous. And to hear the people say, what's the plan on this? You know, everybody says roads, everybody says infrastructure, but not one person has stepped up and helped us with that.
Gotcha.
And when I see that there's really not even a plan, uh because I've actually interviewed people over the years. And I've talked about the plans and I've talked, you know, look, where I work, I, I know a lot of contractors and I know, uh I know a lot of business going on. And I really know that uh the city hasn't taken it seriously. And uh that would be something I would wanna step up and I would wanna take serious. And I would like to, you know, kinda nip it in the bud. Look, there's banks to, to get loans from. I mean, you know, uh the money we spend today improving our infrastructure for the state, for the city roads is a dollar that's gonna be, it's gonna just cost so much more later. And, and we, we got one chance to get it right. When you build all, all of our streets and we, they look so beautiful, it will, it will attract so many people to all parts of the town.
Gotcha.
And it would just be so, it would be such a relief on so many people that have, I mean, these roads are sixty to eighty years old. And they'll do a slurry seal, they'll do a little micro seal over it. And look, those are good processes for certain parts of the street.
Sure.
But those are a waste of money in certain parts of town. And I mean, a complete waste. And you know, I'm gonna go back and talk about the sixty-one million dollar baseball field and uh sports complex. And I know everybody's beat this horse to death, but wow, that's a conversation everybody hears. But they wanna say, wow, with that kind of money, why would we not improve our roads? And you know, my, because that's what I do. I build roads. I know sixty-one million would probably build about a hundred miles of new pavement.
Gotcha.
A hundred miles. Wow.
That would go along with
That would be amazing. That would just light up the city so much. And uh, you know, that's what people wanna, that's where people wanna see their taxes go. And at the end of the day, and I'm gonna contrast what I said earlier about, you know, what I do for the state is uh, I wanna see the money go back on the roads because that's what we pay for.
Gotcha.
We don't wanna do all these feel-good things that uh the state, you know, obviously always wants to do. I wanna see the money go back where it belongs, on the roads, on our infrastructure. Because that's why people pay the taxes. And once again, I wanna use that same concept with the city. And uh I think there's an opportunity there. Roswell's, oh my gosh, it's a beautiful city and we need to take care of it.
Gotcha. So let's go the other, the positive side. Is there things that, that you like right now that the city's doing and you're thinking? We need to invest more time and energy in that. Is there any aspects that you really think that they should do more things with?
You know, um there was a time when I saw the city really promoting the hike it and spike it. I saw the city really promoting softball. And my gosh, this would bring so many teams in from so many different parts of actually West Texas, all over New Mexico, Oklahoma. I mean, it was just crazy. And uh our grocery receipts tax would just bust at the seams when that happened. And also, it gave our kids something to do.
Sure.
It was a great thing, you know? Um softball. I remember when we had softball and it was uh the Bud tournament, a hundred and fifty teams would show up. Oh my gosh, they would come from all over the nation to come play in the New Mexico Bud tournament. And it seems like we've just got away from promoting the city in those aspects. And uh those are great things. And we built the infrastructure, we built softball fields, you know? We've built, we've got a nice uh baseball fields. We also have the Cielo Grande now where we can hold these big hike it and spike it tournaments. And uh I, I don't know if it's just, I don't know, I just think those are assets that we just need to put our arms around and embrace them and embrace them, you know? And look at the, when you go to Redosa and you see all these people walking up and down the streets in Redosa and visiting the shops there and, 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 you know, spending their money. That's what we wanna see here in Roswell. New Mex- the Roswell Main Street program is great. And I, I commend the people that are, you know, and I commend the people for the uh, the alien theme and all that. I mean, that is just great. And we need to keep building on that. And I don't know why, I mean, every day, it's just, it's just non-stop. People are pulling into Roswell. You see Can- Canadian license plates, Mexico, they're coming from other countries. They wanna see Roswell and they wanna see this alien thing.
Yeah.
And it is, it, every day and it's non-stop. They will not quit coming and we need to meet them halfway, you know? Uh I, I think we should build on that.
Sure.
I mean, I've heard people uh talk bad about it, but at the same time, look, if they keep coming, we need to meet them halfway, you know?
We'll take their dollars. We'll take their, their interest and, and let them come and explore our community.
Yes. And let them walk up and down Main Street. And the more we make Main Street flourish, the better this whole community is gonna be, you know? And I think there's a lot of, a, a lot of opportunity with that.
Gotcha. Very good. Um let's talk uh like the, 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 the networking and dealing with folks side. Um uh I was, I mentioned this during uh, during our interview last hour with Juliana that, you know, we have the largest city council in the, in the state of New Mexico, ten, ten members. Um with that, you know, probably pretty diverse. We've got, you know, you really do have a lot of varying opinions amongst those ten people on the city council right now. Um I, I, you know, obviously, like you said, your coaching, your, your experience with youth, the experience with uh the NMDOT, relationships, building those, you're gonna, you're gonna be dealing with people that agree with you and don't agree with you and, and you know what I mean? How uh, how, how do you plan on kind of handling that, navigating that side of things?
Well, you know, and it's, it's, that's a good question. That's just a great question. Uh when I started with the state and I started cleaning up government waste there, I was so unpopular. Oh my gosh, I was hated. I even heard people say, I'll kill you if I ever see you outside of here. And I'm like, oh my gosh, you know? And all I was doing was um, you know, the good old boy thing. And everybody was kicking the can down the road and I just improved processes and I improved budgets. And I, we, we would run out of budgets in some areas. Uh, oh my gosh, we'd have a million dollar budget and we'd run out of it four months before the end of the year. And of course, that, that people would have nothing to do. And I revamped those programs and I made it, actually, those are some of my slush funds now. But it's real simple. I have a quality program that, because I come with a strong background in quality. And I, you know, it's basically where you get all the components of everything you do and uh you run report cards on it and you look at your successes and your failures and you build on your successes and you have corrective action plans for your failures. And uh implementing that, I, I didn't, I wasn't popular at all.
Gotcha.
And I can only assume, like, I'm gonna step into this role, in the event I get elected and I'm not gonna be popular. And but when you start moving forward and you start fulfilling your agenda items, people that pay taxes, they're gonna look you in the eye and say, where have you been? Oh my gosh, thank you. This is a breath of fresh air. And actually, some of the people that are gonna fight me till the very end of change, because change is not easy. Let me tell you, anytime you wanna change, these creatures of habit,
You're right.
You're gonna run into a brick wall. But I'm gonna tell you, when I change these people, they're gonna embrace me. And the taxpayers will look me in the eye and say, oh my God, thank you. Where have you been? And uh I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, it's, it always gets ugly before it gets better. But let me tell you, the end result will be good.
Absolutely. And I, and, and this is just uh why I'm sharing this right now. I don't know when I'm going to. But it, my own personal experiences, um you, you always hear things like, you know, uh like walk tall, carry, you know, a big stick. Oh, you always talk little, I, your actions do speak. And, and I think even if, if you're consistent and you, and you, and you march to the same beat and you, and you, and you believe what you say and do what you say, yeah, people will respect you regardless if they agree with you or disagree with you.
You're exactly right. You know, people have to buy into you, you know? You can uh, and that, that's the thing. Uh of course, knocking on a lot of doors, uh that's the first thing out of people's mouth. Well, everybody says this, everybody says that. But nobody ever comes through.
Right.
And uh that is, that is sad.
Yeah.
Because it does happen and people tell you what they wanna hear, what, what you wanna hear and they'll feed it to you in big doses and then ultimately uh get on there and then they'll follow the same old pattern.
Sure.
The same old rigmarole. And here we are in the same, same situation we were when, when you got elected. You know, and that's something I don't wanna do. And, and actually, uh I'm not gonna do that. And my, I'm gonna fulfill everything I said and I'm gonna talk the talk, I'm gonna walk the walk, uh and carry the big stick.
Sure.
And look, uh we have to, we have to improve the city of Roswell, you know? We, we've been stuck on what? Forty-eight thousand people for how long now, you know? And
Uh let's see, I've been here since two thousand and it's been that since then. So
So exactly. So what is our plan to, you know, increase economic development here, you know? And I, of course, I love the things that are going on now, but for everything that pops up, two things dry up and blow away, you know? And it's, we have to look at a way to, you know, increase our economic development, you know? The airport has so many great things there. We paint planes there, we refurbish planes there. They actually fly them in here, we tear them down and we scrap them. Uh you know, it's, it's, it's a great place out there. We have mechanics, we have more mechanics that wanna show up out there. And the long-range plan on the airport, uh which I'm not aware of, is uh, is all kinds of economic development out there. It's, it should flourish.
Sure.
And, and hopefully, we can embrace that because uh we, we really need to, you know? And I, I would like to talk a little bit about um, you know, I heard that they're building a lot of new houses here in Roswell. And uh I guess that's gonna be for these new people that are showing up here, which I'm not sure where they're coming from. But uh I'm glad to hear we're building new, new homes, you know? The municipal infrastructure reimbursement program, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that?
A little. I don't have a whole lot of.
Well, what it is, you know, it's the city has gone in and they've said, look, we're going to uh compensate all contractors. So much money for building the sidewalk, for building the uh waterline infrastructure.
The city stuff.
City, city infrastructure. Absolutely, absolutely. So uh, you know, once again, I'm like, why are we doing that? When we should be putting, once again, money back in our roads. Uh and, and how is that actually fair for, okay, let's say, Mike Winters wants to buy a new house. Oh, and the sidewalk's cracked on it. So if you rebuild the sidewalk, is the city gonna reimburse you for that? I'm gonna say no, but if you, the contractor's building a new home over here in the subdivision, they're gonna pay for that sidewalk.
Yeah.
You know, you can't pick and choose stuff. Like actually, it builds animosity amongst the citizens of Roswell.
Gotcha. So whatever the policy is, keep it consistent for everybody.
Why would that not be, you know? And uh, don't give people things to complain about, you know? It's bad enough, we have ugly sidewalks in some areas. And guess who owns the sidewalks? The person that lives there.
Yeah.
And uh so when you start fixing sidewalks uptown and there's a still crumbling and, and you're holding accountable to fix your own sidewalk, that's a conversation that, you know, the people are legit with, you know? And I totally get it. And uh I, I look, really look forward to the challenge and I really look forward to uh talking about infrastructure, talking about the dollars. Um I noticed uh, uh there's another CFO running in the city council, but he's in a different ward than mine. And I think collectively, uh my gosh, I think bringing a lot of business, uh seriously, the city's a business. It needs to be run like one. And I know we have a, a, a business manager for the city. Uh it's time to open, open up this can of worms and let's look at all of it.
You're right. It's, 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 and I get what you're saying because, I mean, obviously, a government entity's way different than a business in terms of, you know, the, a, a business is doing it to make money, whereas a government entity's doing it to get services and get what, pay for what they're supposed to do. Um and I get what you're saying and, and yeah, it, it, it's, it's not like they're going to run out and turn a profit on everything. You know, I don't anticipate ever them really turning a profit out at the Recreation Aquatic Center or these places. But at least we don't have it where there are money pits or they're not, you know, obviously, you know, the government's not designed to make money per se, but it sure can be frugal and responsible for the money that they are given. And that's kinda what you're talking about. It's like, when I say run it like a business, I mean, look, a business says, are we spending money where we don't need to? Then we're not doing that. Where a government entity's like, well, we'll get to it when we get to it. And you know, somebody's, you know, and, and so it falls to the cracks easily. And that's, and I think that's kinda what you're saying is we need that, that mindset of why aren't we minding our Ps and Qs like a private business sector would, uh and use that same scrutiny on a government budget.
Yes. And it should be, you know, the mentality of uh government waste is just, it's true to form. And uh, and I'm gonna tell you, uh I, it's not gonna be hard to walk into the city and find ways. And I cleaned up a lot of ways to the state and you can still walk over there and say, well, why are we doing this? Why are we doing that? And actually, I had somebody last week question me on some waste and I told him, what? We, we visited that back in two thousand and seven and fixed that.
I'm sure you're doing a great job as NMDOT, but I don't think you have enough lifetimes to point out all the fraud and waste that the state of New Mexico is doing.
Oh my gosh, you're exactly right. It is a nightmare.
This has been a, 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 a show since New Mexico was made a state in nineteen twelve.
Absolutely, absolutely. That has been a show since nineteen twelve.
I have more adjectives, but I can't say it's a family-friendly show. But uh we're about out of time here, but I, I wanna give you the, the last word on here. Anything we didn't cover, anything you wanna make sure that you got out to folks here today, I, I wanna give you that opportunity.
Well, you know, uh I think with what I've done for the state, my um mentality as far as helping people, helping citizens, I love the kids. I'm a very family-oriented guy. I wanna make the city of Roswell very attractive to our youth. I wanna make it attractive to, you know, like uh our drag racing. Oh my gosh, that's getting ready to dry up and blow away. That is so, that's such an attractive thing. We need drag racing here in Roswell.
What can we do to embrace that?
You know, uh what can we do to embrace that? What can we do to make sure it doesn't go away? I mean, my gosh, you know, uh the roundy round. You know, I gotta commend the gentleman over there on uh South Atkinson there. South Atkinson there, building the Roundy Round track, standing up to all, everybody that got in his way. And he still did it. And that's such a great attraction. We have truck and tractor pulls there.
Sure.
I mean, it's just a nice arena.
Probably brings a lot of outside folks to the area too.
People coming from all over. And guess what? Once again, the kids have somewhere to go.
Yeah, everything I've heard, family-friendly fun, kids having a great time. It's just nothing but a great family outing. So yeah, you're right, let's, let's support that.
We need to support the city of Roswell, we need to get kids out to do stuff, you know? Uh, it, it's just, the, Roswell just has so much opportunity to do so many great things. And I'm going to tell you, uh, if somebody really looks at our economic plan, I, I think it would just be a piece of cake to get 50,000 people here in the next four years.
Gotcha.
I really do. And I think with a lot of comprehensive thought and a lot of great minds putting their heads together and looking at a path to getting our population where we want it and bringing in all kinds of, you know, opportunity, I think we can embrace that. And, uh, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the roads thing, you know? Improved roads, people will come in and buy a house, I don't care where it's at, as long as there's a beautiful infrastructure, black tar, beautiful road in front of it, you know?
Sure.